You don't allow for remote participation, but if it's just one sided, that's.
Okay.
No problem.
So just tell her not to speak up, just to listen?
Yeah. No speaking or?
Is it different because it's a workshop not meeting?
Or I could just let her know that it's no, no participa- no remote participation, I'll just let her know that.
Uh. Yeah. Yeah, I guess I'm not certain on the workshop.
Nope, they were better safe than sorry, yep.
I know in a regular meeting, there's no.
Mm-hmm. Yep, I'm sure you know.
No participation.
Guess we're ready to rock and roll. All right, I did.
Didn't get the gap?
Huh?
Didn't get it.
I don't need to go. If I get big enough, I'm telling you, I don't need to go.
Don't pass out.
I gotta put my reed glasses on. Uh, so our college workshop to order. Here you go. Uh.
Just hold this seat because of the lots of.
We're just holding our workshop tonight, so there will be no interaction with public.
Yeah.
So. Roseanne, you had some things, right, you wanted to bring up?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I might always.
Well, no, I just, if, if, if you know what you want to do, you're just easy.
Well, yeah, no, uh. Since last week, I've been reviewing other towns that might, um, fill in. And I really struggled to find one that had a twenty-four seven plan that was our size and demographics. Can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um. Two towns that have twenty-four seven is Alfred and Shapley. But they have the same numbers as we do for residents, similar, but they have a much higher evaluation and, um.
You mean like a tax base?
Yeah, much higher, um, so like, yeah, Shapley was much higher. And Alfred was much higher, so, and they have other departments and all that too, so it really, it's like, yeah, they have the numbers, but the other demographics didn't meet. So I was going through the list and trying to find towns that met our demographics, cause a lot of these places have ponds and lakes and, you know, things that made their tax rates go higher and stuff. And it was just, it just didn't have the same tax base, so, um, I did some research and then, um, Jason Oko, I had requested that report he had mentioned at the last meeting. And he, he sent it to me and in looking at that, I only got it today, so it was briefly, but I had already come up with my ideas on things. Um, Albion, Bucksfield, Carmel, Eddington, Levant, Machias and Wales was the other towns. And then in looking at those, which some of them had, um, two of them, Carmel and Levant, we've already talked about their, their system. Machias, it was really kinda hard to understand theirs, cause their budget is eight hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, but I, I couldn't, couldn't figure theirs out quite. Um, but Eddington, theirs is only a first responder and they even said in their town report that at this time, they did not feel that they could invest in an ambulance. Um, Albion, I believe is volunteer, has a lot of volunteers, so I didn't find any towns that have true twenty-four seven service. They have twenty-four seven coverage and I think we need to get that clear in our minds before we go forward. What, what are our residents really asking us for? Twenty-four seven coverage that they know that we've made arrangements, that there should be somebody coming? Or actually providing them with twenty-four seven service, which means we employ somebody to en- en- enforce that. And looking at other towns that are close to us, they're not doing that, they, they, they just can't. So when I look at all that and I go back and look at our options, to ensure that we are meeting our towns' requests, the citizens, they want, I'm, in my mind, they want twenty-four seven coverage. And I think we've got some options here that provide that without going twenty-four seven service. And I think it would kinda be irresponsible to go forward and say, we're gonna give a twenty-four hour service if we really don't know that we can support that financially or with the res- resources we have. So I don't know what all the petition entails and all that, but at this point, I even rescind my option that I put out there because other towns on it, even at that point, that are our size and our demographics. I just think we need to maybe step back a little bit and you know, like charge in with, uh, what we think is a solution and not know what we have and like work with our, um, fire department officers and really look at like what we have and stuff this next year.
I don't know though, Rosie, if the, the one for the, the big one's gonna be on the ballot on the, um, in, uh, the, the petition, so that's gonna be the town report anyway, right?
That, yeah, so the petition has been turned in for the three hundred and sixty-six.
Right.
Nine oh two.
Nine oh two, um, so.
That's going, that's one of the options automatically.
Well, yeah, so I've reached out to MMA on how to
Mm-hmm.
handle that, uh, we've gone back and forth, I don't have any.
Effective answer?
Right, um.
But that's gonna be, as far as we know, that's, that'd be one of the ballot questions generally, so.
Yeah. Right.
What we're, but I think what we're gonna come up with is another alternative to that, in case that doesn't go, then we need to come up with an alternative to that.
Well, we've got to put something in recommended by us.
Well, I understand, I'm just saying, but, that's just true shouting, but I'm just saying, that's really all we're doing, we're giv- we're giving an alternative.
Right.
To rather, not either, we gotta have something in place otherwise, so that's what, that's all we're really doing tonight at this workshop is, is just that, figuring what alternative we want.
Yeah, yeah, I think the goal would be for the board to find some kind of consensus on what they can recommend.
Have we ever heard back from Gina?
I have not heard back from them.
So Roseanne, you said that you withdrew what you had planned, did you?
I, I do because I.
Oh, and I agree with you, I said that before, I don't know if the town would, could support that or not.
No, I don't know if the town could and.
So did you have, being how you done, done all this research?
I think.
Do you have a good alternative?
Well, looking at what other people our size are doing, I think we'd go, I mean, I, I mean, if we could have somebody on days and then on-call coverage at night, um, that is what our quote-unquote peers are doing. That's what other towns our size and in our situation are doing.
So do you have a way to?
I would, I'm going back to the.
To fr- to fr- to frame that?
Yes, I'm working on it.
Okay.
I got my different notebooks and I, uh.
Is that on the page you got last meeting?
Yes.
It'd be that one.
You got one there, Sharon?
Yeah, it had these, they're here.
Yeah, okay.
It had this paper on the bottom, this, this is the one that she gave us.
Right, was that what Gina told you?
This is the, like, uh, Jacob gave us this last meeting.
We talked about, um, having our fire department be one of the on-call, you know, have somebody there, you know, available during the day to provide those services or to, um, contract a provider outside. And I think that was the two options that we were discussing originally.
Does that cover the forty hours?
The forty hours during, and then nights and weekends, yeah.
Which is what Camel, Camel is.
So that forty hours, Roseanne, would that forty hours be, uh, different ones signing up for that, like they are now?
Yeah, I believe it would be, if we decided to go with our, our crew, you know.
So what do you mean by, what did you mean by saying, provide, uh, getting a provider?
So like if we contracted a provi- like Levant contracts a provider through Northern Light.
So does Camel.
Oh, rather than have people fill that forty hours?
Right, I, I, I mean, I, I mean, we, we, we had it here that we could have a Corinth provider.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
But I think Camel, they have a, they have daytime coverage from Northern Light, they pay somebody to be there at the station, a provider, and then nighttime.
A provider. And then the other, we had to have to have a driver.
Yep, and then at nighttime, they, they're covered by locally empty's and paramedics and whatnot taking call.
Mm-hmm. And in my mind, if we did that, then we would definitely be paying, you know, the, the full, uh, median rate.
Right, for an empty or, yeah.
For an empty, a paramedic or basic or an advanced, um.
Did you want to put a cost on that?
Well, the cost is on, it's on here.
Okay.
I mean, we're still looking at, um, if we did Northern Light, maybe assisted by Corinth Fire Department, I mean, that brings us to forty to forty-five estimated, which I think that's that the price we'd be paying wouldn't be a hundred thirty-five thousand, but again, it's at the sixteen fifty.
Where'd you see, where'd you see the sixteen fifty, oh, down here, additional.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
So, um, what would, if, what would happen, have, if we had someone forty hours, saying, we need more than one person?
You need a provider and a driver.
Right, but, um, I'm just wondering, if they're getting forty hours, is that a full-time?
Well, if we do a contract, we wouldn't have to worry about that.
Well.
Okay.
Right, or if you do it on a per diem basis where you've got seven or eight people rotating in.
Going, like they are.
I don't, Roseanne, you're not talking about hiring a full-time employee for, you know.
No, okay.
Yeah.
So that'd be, that'd be spread out, different people, forty hours, okay, that was my concern about that, we'll make sure we didn't have forty hours who'd be covering insurance.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It'd be a pool.
Yeah.
And they would have.
Sign up like they do now.
Mm-hmm.
Combo?
Yeah. Jacob, what are you, your input on it, because you understand the financials way better than I do.
Did you see this?
Yeah, so you're on.
So did you make some changes to that, that one that you printed out?
I haven't made any changes, I'm just, we're having a discussion and I'm trying to, to, um.
You know.
Well, that's what the people wants, twenty-four seven, that's what we're hearing.
They want coverage, right, but the difference is, I think we've been getc- getting confused on what is coverage and what is service.
And this would be, yes.
We could, you know, if they wanna be, I mean, I would like to, I shouldn't say they, I'm a resident, you know, it's nice to know that we've got it set up that somebody's gonna come.
Mm-hmm.
If, if, you know, if our on-call people aren't available, you know, Northern Light, which Northern Lights got everybody scared right now because of the state they're in. But if we have, you know, and then, and then the dispatch, if neither of them are available, then there's, you know, hopefully somebody else is gonna come, is that a promise? No, but we're, we're setting things in place, so we're saying, look, we've got twenty-four seven coverage. And then we can take this next year and really look at it and make a good decision, we, we haven't had enough time in these five months.
That's right.
That, it's just not enough data, I mean, we've been without an ambulance, I mean, we've had our town ambulance, but the coverage has been done for the last twenty years by Northern Light having an ambulance here, and it's been covering not just Corinth, it's been covering multiple towns.
Right.
And now we've had that pulled out and we're trying to figure out what does it look like for Corinth? And, you know, the other issue is, we've been hearing, you know, well, we should be supporting our neighbors and that would be lovely and it would also give us an opportunity to reach out to those communities and say, um, you know, we don't have mutual aid, we don't have mutual aid ambulance in our area because Levant, I think is.
There's not enough coverage.
There's not, well, other towns don't have ambulances, that's the issue. So some of these other towns that, um, I was looking at, they do have mutual aid, they have other towns in their area that have ambulances, so they work things out amongst themselves.
But they pay after for that.
Well, it's not, not mutual aid, it's not.
I'm just saying, that's why you can't have mutual aid if you can't give some back.
Exactly, well, that's what I'm saying.
If I give Chris Handoff of the value and he'll give me back five, that's not mutual aid.
No, it's not, so, so looking, you know, but, I mean, I think us jumping in personally, my opinion is I don't feel responsible, or being irresponsible just to say, here you go, guys, and then, and not knowing, I mean, we're never gonna have it perfect, but at least if we plan and work with our, our EMS team here and see what it looks like, cause we haven't had it for twenty years and we've only had it three months again. And it's.
Remember though, Roseanne, we're only talking about an alternative, we already have, we, we, I'm just saying, but you, that's not a bad alternative.
I understand that. I mean, an alternative and then, you know, if they, if, you know, whatever the town decides to do.
Exactly right.
But the thing is, it could be long-term, for me to say, here, let's do just the one option.
But I think that's.
We're, we're being, you know, we're giving that one option when we're saying that is gonna be a big hit to the pocketbook and more than likely, it's gonna keep going up. If we can look at other options.
We've got to have another option.
But, well, that's what I'm saying, the option, the, the one thirty-five is, I, I think is just, is a good option.
And I don't even know if that's, I don't even know if that's, um, the right thing.
All I'm saying is.
I think, I think that's under, I truly, I think that's under, under.
What do you mean, but because of the cost per hour, don't you?
Yeah, because we'd also have, you know, evening coverage.
Well, I thought, I thought you're gonna be, who's gonna be covered in the evening by a male?
Male or if we have on-call, our own on-call.
And then we bring it back up. If, if we did this forty hours, we covered the forty hours and at night, we, at the hours we had mail, we aren't paying for them, so that would help with our cost.
This year.
Right, but that's what we're worrying about.
But, I, I, but I'm like, looking at what other towns are doing and, you know, they're using their own people too, plus a backup. So it's like, at least we have, if, you know, and it's, if there's an actual call, right? So if our, if our, our team decides they're not gonna do on-call because whatever, then it is gonna be Northern Light, but at least we've covered that.
Well, we've covered most, we've covered doing it all day.
Yeah.
Forty hours, so.
Cause a lot of them, um, one of them, not a lot of them, but a few of them do the twelve to twelve, so six to six daytime instead of forty.
Mm-hmm.
So it's more, it, it's actually more.
Um, yeah.
I mean, this just hasn't given us enough time.
It'll be whatever, whatever we set up though.
Right, but it's like looking at the numbers, right, so even if we came with something that was half the cost.
Yeah, so if you go with that option, Roseanne, you're looking at paying median rates for the provider.
Right.
On-call, when they actually go on a run.
Yeah. Uh, so is that, like, during the forty hours during the day though, are we still having people in the fire station?
If we do it in the fire station, then we'd have to pay a minimum wage, but I, I mean, again, the people on seat, they have, um, they, they're offering on-call. If we did it with our people and said, you know, if you sign up for this day, I mean.
But Camel has a, a page of, they pay for provider.
Pay, pay, pay for provider.
Every day, for forty hours.
Yeah. And I think that would be the most reasonable, because when it's contracted.
And then you need a real of daytime coverage, but you're still gonna go over nighttime coverage, but that's when you could do.
Mail, I mean.
Mail or people who are taking, uh, the on-call, that, 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 that's a go on race.
But they, but you, if you did leave it to me, at the Northern Light mail, where you're going, that would, that would help cut the cost.
Well, yeah.
But we also gotta realize the thing, the reason that people are so edgy is because Northern Lights is such a bad way right now and if they do shut their ambulance doors, especially with this scare tactic, tax thing.
Then we're all the same book and all stay, we're all the same book.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I don't think it won't be different to anybody else.
We're all gonna be in the same.
Yeah.
Although it seemed like they, they answer almost every call that comes out to them.
That they're avai- that they're available.
No, but I've, they've answered it to a lot of the calls that's popped to Corinth goes to Levant and they've responded or started before they're told to go back, so they have been pretty responsive, I think, on the call. But we don't know until we try yet.
So we just, we gotta pick an alternative, I, I believe tonight, I don't.
Well, can't pick it now, you can discuss it.
Well, come to consensus, I mean, we can, you can discuss till now the cows come home. And then I'm low yet, so I mean, point being is, we gotta make some kind of consensus tonight for an op- for an alternative.
And then for Jacob, if you could come up with numbers again.
But that's the one you stuck, Roseanne, that one.
And that's what.
And, and even with Camel's, the whole price on that wasn't, well, the tower was bad.
No, I mean, we're still, I'm still thinking we're gonna be like, it's gonna be half, I think.
Well.
But, but again, then we can look at it like this next year and say, you know, again, just like the five-month thing, we've gotta look at what we're, we've gotta be able to see what is happening.
That's right.
And then we can say, you know what, this isn't working at all, we need our own ambulance. Or we can say, you know what, this is working the way it is, but we can tweak it a little bit, I mean, when I'm, you know, like Eddington said, we have a first responder and we aren't in a position to have an ambulance service yet, we'll look at it in another year.
I think that's what a lot of car people think of it, that, um, we all.
Well, the, the, the high note of everything is gonna be fact, we're not actually have a town meetings and people have a change.
Mm-hmm.
So if I'm, so, you should always have something controversial, maybe not wanna cost you quite so much money, but still, something controversial, I think you can get, put some butts in the seats and we'll look at the crowd.
Yep. Well, not, you know, need to hear what they really want.
Well, yeah.
And, and we gotta be, we gotta also be thinking of the older folks who are paying taxes, who don't get, can't get up to these meetings.
Here I am.
You can get there.
Oh, I get up, I mean, I'm old, I'm old, I'm an older folk paying, paying taxes.
I mean, we're, we're working for them to. Not just for those who can show up, we gotta think of them.
So. So do I.
I do too.
Well, so why don't we just say, present that, if you, if you can get some numbers together in the meantime on that, but I, I think it's a good option to present, cause I didn't see nothing else, I mean, I didn't wanna go with nothing.
We, we have given an option.
That's what I'm saying, that.
Because even if they said no, we know we've got backup right there.
Well, that's okay, so, right.
Jump forty hours in the station.
Right.
I mean, I really was, I knew like when our high call line was, but you know, I mean, you never know when a call is gonna happen, right, you just don't know.
Can't play what I throw, throw up.
Right, you can't, so, but it seems, forty hours seems reasonable.
Yes. That's a, other place to see, so let's go with the norm.
So that's forty hours a week at station.
Right. Plus a driver.
They're contracted.
Plus a driver. The driver, right, the drivers. So, uh, how, um, what's the call, what's the, I don't know where it is, how much time does a driver have to get there? Like you, some, sometimes it said five minutes and now it was up, one was up to fifteen, so how much time does a driver then get there?
Well, I think, well, you, you get, you gotta be realistic, there we go, you gotta be realistic, fifteen minutes is a realistic time, right now it's time of year. If you, five minutes, I couldn't get there, five minutes is my house.
Right.
So five minutes would need to be either.
But if you're doing this somewhere, you could come from Kennesaw, you get here, is that correct?
Okay.
So fifteen minutes?
I mean, I'm not telling where you gotta be, but I'm just saying, we did, we all agreed fifteen minutes was the time at the station.
Well, I mean, if we're, if we're paying a provider to be in the station, do you want a driver there with him or?
But then I'll get the same.
I mean, my understanding of the way it worked before was that the driver got paid minimum wage.
Okay.
Or something like that, even when he wasn't there.
Okay, well, could you, could you run, even when he wasn't at the station?
Well.
Yeah.
But within the fifteen minutes?
Oh, I think it was more stringent than that, but I.
Well, I mean, you, you gotta either be there, if it's more than five minutes, you ain't, you might run down a rubs and get some gas, maybe.
Yeah.
Or sandwich better than that, go to pizza shop, but, I mean, you, you gotta, you gotta either say be there or.
So our driver didn't, right, until this happened, our driver could be so many minutes away from the station, is that correct? Well, they have to leave.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay.
Is that right, Mark?
Yeah.
And what was the time? Mike, what was the time?
I can't remember, you fellas.
Five minutes for sixty.
I think it was five minutes was what the.
Five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
That's a pretty short time, but.
Give you time, go to pizza shop and get a half a slice of pizza.
You could say ten, be in the middle, I guess.
Little bit of that too.
The only other thing I found that some other towns are doing, and I don't even know, I mean, it must be legal, but I definitely wanna look into it, is they call a subscription? And that's to help cover for the like, like a new ambulance or suppo- you know, things like that, and it was in a household.
Oh, I seen it do that.
You've seen that?
Yeah, I've wanted to get that, right.
Then you, you, you pick like, if you have four or less people in your household, like you pay twenty-five dollars and then if your family uses.
Twenty-five dollars a year?
Yeah, which, which, hold on a minute, cause I thought it sounded hokey too, so, and if they use the ambulance, they'll bill their insurance, but the remainder of their bill, the town wouldn't charge them. And I was thinking, well, geez, you know, if it's a big bill, so if we're getting a third, so anyway, I figured out for our town, if we had something like that, it would be thirty-two thousand dollars if, if thirteen hundred people did it.
We don't wanna put another fee on them if they're.
This is optional.
Yeah.
And the businesses, that over five children, it's fifty dollars, and if you're a business, it's a hundred dollars. I mean, that's, I mean, again, nothing we need to put in practice now, but those are the options going.
Well, if you're, if you're a business, you know, you can always pass it on, you can hopefully pass it to consumers. There, there is also, uh, there's a place out of state and you kind of, it's like a homeowners association and the fire department and EMS come to your house, but you pay so much, like a subscription, but it's a monthly prescription, but the one they'll do probably that's nice, they'll call your insurance company if you don't keep up with your payments, they'll call the insurance company to tell me you're uninsured. Pretty nice of, so, you know, everybody keeps on the same. I thought that was pretty good.
So we can't kind of try to cut down the tax when they've been asking for some more?
Well, I think she talked about options, but I don't think we're gonna, I think one more option is all we need for right now.
Give, take. Yeah. So is there anything else in this that we need to look at?
I think the forty hours, the on-call.
And then after-hours would just be on a voluntary basis.
And then after-hours. If people could voluntary on-call basis and get paid for the actual time out on the run and coming back and fix, fixing up at the station, whatever they need to do.
And is that also be in?
I mean, we could do it, we could do a.
Yes, that, that would be, that would be whatever your qualification was, if you're a veteran.
Cause they're only gonna get paid when they go.
Right.
I mean, we could do a minimum, a minimum call time of two and a half hours. Cause we keep saying whether it's two or three, and if we cut it right in the middle in two and a half, then.
Per, per call?
Half or three, two and a half?
Well, we've been saying between two and three hours.
Would you, would you say between call, we're talking about the time gone?
Yeah, I mean, the, the actual time gone, I mean, time gone.
Well, I would, I would say a minimum time and how would be long, cause you, it could be gone three or four hours, if you had an accident or something, you could be tied for long times.
Right.
What minimum, she said?
Well, that's, but I'm saying, yes, but there'd be a minimum plus whatever time, but not a, not a total call.
If they was gone four hours, they'd have to get paid for four hours.
Four hours, right, but if, cause.
Two hour, I'd say two hour minimum.
Cause like we've been finding that the last three months, two months, like we have so many calls, but then we have so many non-transfers, whether it's a lift or whatever. I mean, if they get up, get up in the middle of the night and go out and they've been gone twenty minutes and then.
I would, no, I would say twelve minimum.
I mean.
Jacob, what's your thoughts?
I would go any less than two, I, I think you could make the case for either two or three on that, I mean, anytime they transport somebody, by the time they go on a call, they're back
It's gonna be three hours, yeah.
and do everything they need to do, they're gonna be at three.
Yes.
Right.
But a minimum, I thought a minimum was the least, but if there was three hours or four hours, five hours, they get paid for it.
A minimum. Well, they would, but we're saying.
Yeah, it's just a question of if someone falls and they, they go pick them back up, they're gone for thirty minutes and then they, they're done.
Get a minimum two, I see, is that a minimum of two?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, I, I see what you're saying, yes. Okay, I, I see what you're saying, yes. Let's, so, how, can we do two?
Okay, it's two, what, people comfortable with?
Minimum.
I mean, I mean.
Minimum, I mean, if you go on, we.
Whatever they go, they're gonna get paid for the rest of it. But there's, just go picking up and lifting or whatever, it's gonna be minimum.
Plus we also have the, the, we're getting that policy in place, and policies in place for lifts, that they also have a charge, right?
Alright.
There's a way to recruit.
Oh, like just that one place?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right now.
Right. So how would, how would, um, on that one, the after hours, if they, if they decide to take some of the calls, how would Northern Light or May or whatever the call, how would they know if we're covered in them?
I think it'd be the same thing it is now, I mean, they.
They get the call and then they, okay.
Do you call back from the station, Mark, or from wherever?
As far as.
Would you, if you're gonna respond to a call, say for instance, you's home, you decide you wanna go to that call, would you call dispatch to just have them cancel mail, or would you, would you do it when you get to the station, or would you do that from?
Well, right now, when I'm at the station, it's, it's immediately at the station.
So, but you don't do it from?
Or somebody else, if they're on like Matt, if he's home, he'll, he'll get on the radio and call dispatch and have them cancel.
Okay, but it's, it's not done by radio though?
Correct.
Okay.
Most of the time, unless they don't have a radio, they'll call him.
Yeah.
By phone.
Okay, I just didn't know for sure how that worked.
Mostly by radio, yes.
So is that next to the last sentence, the two hundred, three hour calls, is that what we're talking about, they pick up? The next to last sentence? Two hundred, three hour calls paid at?
Yeah, sixteen maybe.
Which would be two hours, which would be the two, right?
Right, but I think I'd base that at a lower pay rate too.
Yes. Sixteen fifty.
Is that what, is that what the price would be?
That's for the driver, right?
No.
Depends if we, we have to set the rates, I mean.
That's right.
We're gonna have to set the rates when it's gonna cost.
Right, so I, I think I'd probably budget based on the median rates that Roseanne found ahead of the last meeting.
Yeah.
Was that it? The one that's in the paper, is that a different figure?
It's twenty, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, drivers two eighty. I see what you're saying, right.
Drivers twenty, basics twenty-three fifty, advances twenty-six fifty and paramedics thirty. I got that in my head.
Now, is that for the top one too, where we had twenty-seven? Is that?
That was if we.
That's for all day, that's twenty-seven.
That's if we did contracted. That's our daytime contract.
Right, the contract, that, but after hours, it's gonna be the rates that you had on that piece of paper.
That contract. Cause it's our people.
Right. Well, top ones might be ours too.
I'm sorry?
The top one might be ours too. I thought you just said that'd be our people, but that first line, EMS provider would be our people, upper.
Could be, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so that would be if we do per diem with people that belong to this side.
I thought we already decided we were gonna do contracted, so you're still saying that's on the table?
Well.
Is that another option?
Well, I would keep it on the table if they want to and I'm not sure whether Northern Light's gonna be able to provide anybody for that either.
I thought you, you had spoken to him, I thought you.
Well, yeah, I have, but I haven't gotten the final answer.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then that makes a whole big difference, we'd have to get that answer first.
So the first line, car contracts for EMS provider, is that the list of the figures you gave us last time, or is that that twenty-seven dollars an hour, that's what I'm asking?
So, that's based on what Camel is paying.
I, yeah, but is that what we are looking at?
Well, that's an example, cause Car, that's what Camel's contract says, so that's what we were looking at.
So.
If, if we get a request.
Right, and so they could come back and say, we'll do it, but we're gonna do it for twenty-nine instead or.
Cause each town, right, they're contracted.
Guess I'll hold it what you're feeling, are we gonna ask our people, or are we gonna tell your family?
That's what, yeah, that's where the confusion just lies, cause I thought we'd say contract with Jacob.
So if we go with a person coming in, contract with a person coming in, it's gonna be the twenty-seven an hour?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
It's whatever they set as a rate.
Right. At the level they're at.
Yeah.
Okay, so it pays at level, at their level.
Cause it also, they could also say, well, do you want, well, all we can provide you is a basic or all we can provide you is an advanced.
That's probably gonna be it.
And all we can provide you with is a, you know, paramedic, so if all we can provide you is a paramedic, you're gonna pay the going rate for a paramedic.
I don't think you gotta worry about that right now.
Well, I can dream.
Well, I know that, but I think you're gonna find, we had a hard job getting EMTs.
Trying to be lighthearted here, Stuart.
Lighthearted, contracted for EMS provider.
I'm also a realist.
We guess there's something.
Right. Yeah, so is there a preference to do it by contract rather than per diem?
I think that's gonna depend on.
The amount.
The discussion and.
Okay.
So, but I mean, we, we, I mean, basically, I mean, if this is, I mean, that, we've gotta make the decision of what we as a town know we can provide financially and with the resources we have. We have ten providers and out of those ten providers, five of them are doing eighty percent of the work. Potentially six, because we just realized that Mark isn't getting, wasn't getting marked for the time he's doing it during the day, because he doesn't get paid. So those hours haven't been tracked and they're gonna start tracking them, so now, again, we don't have all the data to do, to make a great decision. So I'm, I'm saying we need to err on the side of caution, is, people who have to buy this town, we need to err on the side of caution and say, we're gonna provide you the best service possible until we know more, because towns our size and our demographics.
But we're still gonna make a decision, I mean, I, I, I hear what you're saying, but.
Well, I know we do. And the town, the people have to make the decision, they have, they can say, we want the Cadillac.
I understand, but we gotta. But we gotta give them something, give them another option, they're, they're already gonna get a chance to vote on the Cadillac.
Cadillac or Buick, right, you know?
I'd say Cadillac or Chevrolet.
Well, alright, four, we'll go with that, but.
We're standing.
But we also need to say, but we have to show we've been intentional and we've been looking at the information and looking at the information, other towns our size and our demographics are in the same boat and these are the type of things they're coming up with and they're having to work with their, their EMS crew or they're calling them rescue squads now and, and realizing, you know, there's, there's gotta be a compromise. I mean, and we've only got ten people, we've got three drivers and ten people and if any one of them decides to walk away, then, okay, then we, you know, if, if the big one doesn't go through and they all decide to walk away, I don't thi, I think we've got some good people and I don't think they'll walk away and I think they're community minded. But right now, we're very confused because we don't have the data we need.
But if everybody walked away, we'd be alright, cause we're covered.
Yeah, but, but there's that.
Just like every other town around us, we're covered.
Well, but there's that fear that if Northern Light.
But every town's the same position.
Yes, they are, and we, if there's a report out called the Desert of Maine, it's EMS Desert of Maine and luckily, our pocket right now doesn't look bad. To the east of us and to the north of us looks really bad, it's a lot of yellow. But our little pocket looks pretty good, but we also got Northern Light, if Northern Light collapses, we could get more yellow in our area.
If they collapse, we're all gonna be worried.
So, I mean, an ounce of prevention, an ounce of prevention, that's, that's what I'm trying to.
Well, say, now, now we're back to, we're back to the, the big number again then, that's the only way you're not gonna have to worry about that, Roseanne, seriously.
I understand, I, I don't believe that totally because other towns are doing it.
I understand that, but this is why we gotta make a decision, one way or another, and pick something and go with that.
And I agree with you.
We can't go keep going what else because.
And if they get, we're not thinking of learning that.
Well, I'm not saying that.
Well, actually, we, but we are, we can't keep saying the what else, cause there's no answers, there is no answers.
And we can't, we can't keep saying, well, what if they coast out, no, we gotta go with this and hope for the best.
But I'm saying, dealing with the fearful nature of people in general, we've got some very smart people in this town and they're just gonna have to hear this, that's why I'm putting it out there, they need to hear the options, because it's either gonna be what they consider safety in numbers, but they're also gonna have to pay for. In our town and looking at other towns around us, it could be devastating.
But you say safety in numbers, it's the same amount of people doing, the big one is, would be this one. Same amount of people, ten.
Right.
So whether it's the.
And I don't think the big one, ten, I mean, the amount of time that we're actually on emergency calls, I don't feel it's warranted.
Yeah, I didn't either.
Does, that doesn't mean I don't value EMS's time, I'm just saying, the price, it's scary, but it's gonna be up to the people. So, you know.
So that's on the board, that's, that's up, that's taken, that's a done deal, so, no have to talk about that anymore tonight, all, all we gotta do is decide what we're gonna do and we finish this up right here.
Yep, so the twenty-four seven coverage instead of service, forty hours a week with a provider and a driver, nights and weekends covered on call or Northern Light with a two hour minimum going to our EMS crew, wouldn't there?
That sounds so simple, I've done it.
So. A contract, help me out here, per diem, a contract, just like you're saying. Per diem, a contract, uh, would it matter as far as the hours and insurance is my concern?
Yeah, so if you go per diem, it's probably going to, well, depending on what the price you get for a contract provider, it's probably gonna be higher because you're gonna have workers' comp and payroll taxes.
So if we went with contract, it'd be different?
Well, that's the set cost.
Right.
I saw, I, I think we need to go contract.
But we gotta make sure we can get one, so we gotta follow up.
Right.
See if you can find that out.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I don't mean to keep putting more stuff on.
No, it's on my list, I, I think, I think we can, I'll run the numbers worst case.
Okay.
And, because you don't need, I mean, you want a plan to present at the town meeting.
And we don't ask them to say, I have total numbers for that right this minute.
Right, but what we need is a number to put in the warrant.
Right.
And if midway through the year, you find a way to do it a lot cheaper, you're not bound by what you.
Right.
Originally planned.
Right, good point.
So we, if we, if we're looking at it with, so that we don't have to pay workman's comp and insurance and all that, that would be the route to go then?
It, it could be, Northern Light's gonna build that into their.
Price.
Price. So, either way, you're, you're gonna pay.
I think, wait, wait for the numbers, that's what you can do, wait for the numbers. Otherwise, that will shoot from the hip.
I, I mean, if you went per diem, you'd probably pay more, but you'd probably get better qualified providers.
Right.
Than you would with the contract.
Cause contract, they might give you a basic, when we have several
Right.
paramedics and.
Well, if we, I'm just saying that if we go the route that they, they can get insurance and workman, workman's comp and that, that would increase our figure, that's what we're gonna look at.
Yeah, well, we're not talking about health insurance, it's just the.
Oh, that's what I was wondering, because of forty, that's why I was asking, cause a person works forty hours.
So it'd be a per diem pool.
Right, yeah, it'd just be a.
Okay, well, that answers my question, should get.
Yeah.
Well, guess that looks like a.
Done deal.
We'll meet Thursday and decide.
Yep, we'll take, maybe have some, maybe have some answers for us.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Do you, do you have, do you want some of that?
Yeah. And here's a copy of the very rough draft of the warrant.
Yep, I'll look that up. And between my meetings.
Got a few more things to, to change on it, but, uh, if anybody has any comments, let me know.
Where, where is the signature?
Uh, well, when it was in color, I highlighted everything that I thought was good in green and made the thing, it would be down still as yellow.
Okay.
Uh.